Okay, this is a meeting of the Leamster School Committee. It is February 6th, we are at the Apple Seeds Restaurant. It is 6:00 PM, would you all stand and join me, salute to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Committee represents the needs of all public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership adhered to our protocols and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We'll advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leamster. That is the Leamster School Committee statement, our mission statement so to speak. I heard myself. It is now time for the public forum, is there anyone here that would like to address the committee? If so, just, there's a microphone there, it's the first time this setup is available. And by the way, so, Steve, some of the other meetings that I watched is kind of like muffled, that won't happen now with this new system? Beautiful. So, anyone would like to address the committee, just come forward with your name for the record, please? Anyone? One last time? Now, anybody from the, anybody registered, pre-registered? Okay, if not, we'll close this portion of the meeting, we'll go now on to communications.
There are no communications this evening?
We'll now move on to student report, Matt?
Great, so I'm gonna start with Gold, who couldn't, Gold's presentation who couldn't be here today because she has COVID, which is unfortunate. So, hello everyone, I hope everyone is doing well, we are in our second month of the new year. CTI began its middle school recruitment visits a couple of weeks ago, when they visited West Boylston Middle School. Mr. Kine, Mr. Bellata, and Mr. McKinley had set their visions on Samset, and finally, the recruitment team visited Skyview in January. The goal is to generate interest among student, among middle school students in our CTI programs. On Saturday, March 4th, from 9:00 AM to noon, CTI will be holding their annual open house. This is a great opportunity for 8th grade students and their families to visit CTI, explore shops, and meet our shop instructors. Electrical student Joseph Siciliano became our most recent co-op student when he started at Bratton Industries on Monday, December 12th. Juniors are currently in the purpose of getting paperwork in place to go out on co-op when they become eligible. Carpentry continues its work on the Granite Street addition. In the past couple of weeks, they have lifted all the trusses into place, installed them, and framed the remaining part of the roof to tie the addition into the existing house. They have installed all the plywood of the roof deck, and we are getting the roof deck ready to install the asphalt roofing shingles. They have set up staging to install the trim work for the rakes and fascias, I don't know. So, they were able to complete the additional before Christmas break, have it weather tight. Plumbing has been busy, Johnny Appleseed School working on sink repairs. For the second straight year, the HVAC shop is participating in the Reef's Across America program to help place over 3,000 reefs on our veterans' graves at the Massachusetts Veteran Memorial Center in Winston, Mass. Health assisting instructor Vicki Poland recently completed a NEASC accreditation visit, which will be quite helpful as CTI embarks on its own NEACE accreditation process. Principal Beishant, Assistant Principal Kine, and Guidance Counselors Mary Bellata and Lori Levrone recently met with the NEASC representatives Bruce Severs to kick off that process. And now I will do the Leamster High School Committee report. Prep for the LHS Winter Carnival is underway. Every year, we have this event in the auditorium. Students have the opportunity to sign up for events and compete against their fellow students. It's always held right before February vacation. I personally will be doing the Spin the Bat Relay Race, which I'm really excited to get dizzy and fall on my face. Winter sports are still going on with outstanding seasons, but basketball, wrestling, hockey, track and cheer. The Drama Club is working on their next play, James and the Giant Peach, and they will be competing with it in the upcoming Drama Festival that starts on March 3rd. The Black Heritage Gala is Wednesday at LHS in honor of Black History Month. To build the culture of the school, there have been a number of initiatives. Students have already done a survey through the school newspaper on the racial climate of the school, and there will be another school committee survey, or sorry, school climate survey for all students this week on a number of other aspects of culture. I have also organized a survey similar to last week based on our discussion from last week's meeting. I asked the student body, quote, "In what ways can students network to other schools in order to help each other deliberate slash solve problems within each of their respective schools?" Some suggested having an advocate from each school within, which can then meet together on a given day to discuss their school's biggest problems. Others recommended there can be an adult advisor to help organize the discussions. Well, that, sorry, that was connected to the last one, so there'd be an advisor there at those meetings. And then, others recommended the guidance counselor from each school communicating with one another based on what the students tell them. The Blue Devil Nation Club is also planning four events, a dance, a 5K run, a video showing off all the great things LHS students do, a possible staff versus student Olympics. Stump Student Bill of Rights and Responsibilities has been sent to the staff for feedback, which, in case you don't know what that is, Stump's been organizing a very, we're trying to make it as official as possible, a document which would say our rights to students that would, can't really be infringed, and also that would entail our responsibilities to the staff as well, so it's not just one-sided. You know, but yeah, it's getting, we got a new step in that, which is really exciting, where the staff is gonna be looking it over for feedback. Prom will be here before we know it, a pre-prom survey has been sent out to parents to fill out. This is required before a student can buy a ticket. And I also wanted to talk to you guys about the new school committee, the new school committee updates and voting rights. Basically, there's been, there's been an effort to increase the rights of the school committee representatives' ability, which is to vote. So, I've been sent an email to reach out to Congress, not Congress, but to, you know, our local representatives and our senator to just kind of push for that. And yeah, we're really hoping that we can make that reality. And there is also new committees being added, which I, so like, there's different categories. Legislative Affairs Committee, Communications Committee, Resource Committee, Curriculum Committee, and Finances Committee. I'm personally really interested in the Curriculum Committee. But yeah, it's really exciting to see a lot of new things coming for the MASSER, which is Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, so, that's it.
Thanks, Matt.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to presentations and discussions. The Women of Color Series, I think we-
Ivy was unable, she had a conflict in her schedule, but would love to be before-
Invite her back.
Yes, she's wonderful.
Northwest School Presentation?
For those of you that haven't met Dan Mulvey, he is the new principal this year. He, last year, he was the assistant principal. He has been doing remarkably well. Proud and happy to-
I appreciate being here, thank you very much, and I hope I do remarkably well tonight as well, so. So I do have a presentation that I put together, I will, I'm happy to answer questions as well. But as I go through, I will have some notes to try to keep myself on track, so.
It's us that have to stay on track.
Well, I can get off track as well, so I can-
Not worried about you.
So, oh, and I do have a clicker here, so I'm gonna do my best. Hopefully Kyle doesn't have to help me, we'll see if I can, there we go. So, one of our first school improvements that happened over the summer is right before the school year started, we had a new gym force put into Northwest, it was actually like an amazing process. The gentleman that did it, it was, you know, something to be seen.
It's art.
It is an art, nope, yep, going in there, seeing them sand it all the way down, you're like, wow, how did that happen? And then next thing you walk in, you're like, wow, how'd you paint all that stuff already? It was an art, I agree. So, we were very fortunate that the school district was able to provide us that right before the school year started. It was a nice way to start the new school year. So, then we're having rec basketball going on there now, and our PE teacher is looking about getting some type of spring recreation going on there coming up in the next couple of months. So, we're gonna go to the PTO, talk to the school department about that, something he's done in the past, and it's nice that we're getting in this position where we can start bringing some of the things that were happening pre-COVID back into the buildings. We were fortunate that last year, when some of the restrictions were lifted, that we were able to do some school dances and some events that were really well attended. And as we go through some of the events that I'll show tonight, I can say that they've been really well attended so far as well. So, it's been really nice to see the community wanting to connect and get back in person, and we're trying to provide as many of those opportunities as we can. So, next slide, this is our library, well, a few pictures of our library. I actually condensed this into one slide, it was more than one slide. We've had several pieces of work done to our library this year. We had some temporary walls put up in our library to provide spaces for some additional programs within our school. When we added on some classrooms this year, they were displaced and the library was a place that we identified that we could use, maximize the space to provide an area for that, for some of those services for some of our specialized populations. Also, we received a grant from the Green Communities to put in heat pumps in the library, those are just installed. I think they finished the last week with the, it was right up to the deadline. The group that came in, they were terrific, did some work during the day, did a lot of the work in the second shift in order to not disrupt the learning going on. So, we have three heat pumps that have been placed in there for air conditioning and for heat. Re-supplemental for the heat and for the air conditioning in the, you know, in the warmer months. I didn't, I didn't do that, but that just occurred. I mean, the library, just right now, at Northwest, we have 32 classrooms within our building, homeroom classrooms. Occupancy-wise, we are not, like, we are very well underneath our occupancy, depending on the amount of students we have in our building, just because we have pretty big square footage. But with our specialized programs and some of the things going on within our building, things are getting tighter. We, I would've told you at the beginning of January, we squeezed every little inch out of our building. We did have to move another group into the library when we outgrew a room they were using. It wasn't, once again, like occupancy within the building, but it was in that room, the program that was in there grew and grew, that teacher came and spoke to us. And luckily, we were able to have the fire marshal come around, show us what was viable, and able to do some quick movement to find a space that was more appropriate for that learning environment. So, right now, you know, in Northwest, we were open to being fire partners about how we can maximize our space to meet the needs of our children. We have been saying before, we, you know, we are very happy and welcoming to all the students that come into our building. And, and we're, go ahead.
Sorry, I don't want to cut you off. I saw the library and the new spaces, and they're adding the walls and such, and I know a lot of those spaces actually are blocking some of those heat vents. Has there been any kind of talk or communication on taking that kindergarten out of your school and maybe spraying them out and opening up those classrooms for some of these special ed classrooms and such?
Yeah, I think that would be like a discussion, that's not discussions that I've had very much with the district. I think there'd be district conversations, school committee conversations. For myself, what I've been trying to do this year is problem solve that, when immediate thing comes up, how can we meet the best needs of those students?
Would that be something you'd be in support of, if that would be beneficial for that?
I think that's something that-
To be considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we, Dan and I have been talking about this. Dan has been a huge supporter that his students need to be in his neighborhood school. And so, as students keep moving in this year, he wants to maximize space. So, we've been walking the building and looking at alternatives, so that discussion is starting.
How many kids, how many kindergarten children are we talking about?
How many kindergarten students are in our building?
Yeah.
Forty-six, right?
Well, it goes, you know, it, one beggars the other, piggyback on his question statement.
Forty-six, is it forty-six?
Forty-six, two sections, it's only two sections, two classrooms. There's a group of Northwestern students that go to Pre-Streets still, that's for kindergarten.
Go ahead, what, go ahead and answer.
No, I like when I hear all this rattling around, but my question is as follows. One, how many kids? Two, what's the limit for the kids? Three, to piggyback on his, if you're gonna move the kids, where would they move to?
So, all of that is all, yeah, so that's all preliminary, those are just things we're considering at this point. So, those are all the pieces that we would have to work through. So, right now, it was nice to have the fire inspector come in, he walked the building last week, looking at every nook and cranny. So, we're gonna see how creative we can get before we make any decision. And so, then we'll bring the details back to this committee.
The last thing we want is to leave the meeting tonight, if somebody misunderstands what was said, and then some parent gets upset, you know what I mean, so-
Well, it just beggars the question, unfortunately, I'm the one that has to ask, how much money are we talking about?
Just nothing, right now, it's just, right now, it's, they're just considering-
But you can't talk one without the other.
They're considering all options, and when they have that down and they narrow the options, they'll be back and they'll report back to the school committee, but right now, it's just-
We still have time right now.
Yeah, right now, it's, it's-
Because it goes back-
Examining all the-
Goes back to the thing that we talked about. I didn't know, but- My answer. It goes back to what we talked about weeks ago. I wanted to ask, carry on, about the waiting list. And again, I'm asking bad question. Is there a waiting list for this, for the kindergarten? One, yeah?
Not to my understanding, I believe that we still have some capacity within our kindergarten right now, if we're forty-six.
What I wanted to ask, and if I got a chance to ask, because all of a sudden, I got bamboozled. Have we done, have they done, is there, has there, will be, has there ever been done any studies about the effect of being on a waiting list? And what's the end stage for waiting lists? How long do you have to be on a waiting list? You told it yourself.
A waiting list to get into kindergarten? I mean, we have to take you, there is no waiting list.
There is no waiting list, you have to-
Right, it's just a question where you might go.
Right.
Where was the, somebody told me, somebody said-
It was creative choice.
Creative choice?
Yeah.
But it leads to kindergarten, no?
No.
It's just before and after.
Before and after school programming.
But it kind of leads to that, doesn't it?
No, because your son or daughter is gonna have a spot in class, a regular class. It's the before and after school program.
You pay for creative.
Right.
Right, it's just like paying for private daycare or a babysitter. Sorry, I keep-
That's it.
So, at this, so at this point, let's have Dan just finish this.
Go ahead. So, the answer to that, Ron, is-
I figured I'd just jump into it and just search it out.
So, we don't leave missing with anybody misunderstanding, if somebody went for the kitchen, to the living room, we come back and then, so, just so everybody's on the same page. There are a number of areas being considered, there are no decisions made. Every child who comes into the system will have a place and creative choices. They're still working on trying to find additional employees to work the program so they can expand it. That's, go ahead.
Stan?
That's a great summary, and I think that, yeah, as this conversation, if it does go to that route, we want to make sure that, you know, our staff and our, and, you know, communities would know, and our families know, you know, whatever.
Make sure your phone's not ringing tomorrow.
That's okay. Hit it, now it is, there we go.
Look at you showing them.
New boilers.
So, I know this was shown before from Butch, but I wanted to show it again. This is the new boiler that was installed in our Northwest in October. It was very much needed, and it was a really impressive, another impressive job of this company coming out here, the school department supporting it, and getting this energy-efficient boiler installed into our, into Northwest. They're gonna do, install a few more pieces, I believe, in the summertime. I believe this was the part to make sure it was up and functioning, but they have a few more things to do in the summer. And we are just grateful for the district and for the company that did it.
Was it Boston Mechanical that did it?
It was Boston Mechanical, and they coordinated a bunch of other, and it was, you know, around the clock type of, this one was around the clock, the other one was working second shift, they were working around the clock. And when in the beginning, at the end, you're like, wow. Yeah, so they, it was impressive, they did a great job, and we were very fortunate and haven't had, you know-
Don't even say it.
It's been gone well. And our custodians have been really doing a nice job that if there's anything's going on in classrooms, getting down, checking on those spots, making sure if things are too hot, too cold, making sure that, you know, everything's up to snuff there. So, we were fortunate for that, that was an improvement that was put into us for the district. It was not inexpensive, but it was terrific job and very much needed. This was a proposal that was brought to the school committee in the summertime, and it was brought to the school committee about having a conversation, and we were very fortunate at Northwest that the school department supported it, and the school committee supported it, and put it to a vote that night, which really got the ball rolling. There, you know, the quote has been received by the Owen Brothers, O'Briens, O'Brien.
Right.
Sorry, O'Briens, and the plan is to break ground in April vacation. They said about a four-week process is what they mentioned to me. They need to put in excavation there for drainage, there's a lot of drainage issues there on the playground. And after they finish this, they're gonna section off part of the playground, so the playground's gonna be open for the kids, by like our block top where our basketball hoops are, and then they'll section off that area, open this up, and they're gonna move our basketball hoops over. Because, you know, some of the issues the kids have with the balls go over the fence, over to that little road that goes around the school, so that's gonna be the second phase of it. And we're really, you know, PTO, we've been talking about it, but we can't really get any concrete dates yet. We want to do like a big celebration on a weekend or something like, or an event for families just to kind of like our, you know, grand opening for it. And it's hard to kind of hammer that down, because we don't know exactly when it's gonna be open. But once it's open, you know, we will send out the invites to all of you and, you know, the whole community, and do a nice celebration for it, because we're gonna be excited for that, and wanna, you know, celebrate with our families.
Oh, grill.
You pushed me on the swing, so.
There we go. That'd be a photo op.
Yeah.
Not too hot, I want to go.
So, a few security measures re-implemented and put back in place now, we have visitors back in our building. Sign-in protocols and visitor badges for visitors that are in the building. We are requiring staff to start wearing their badges again, just because, you know, we have, you know, as I said, thirty-two classrooms, so there can be a lot of people hired, additional staff in our buildings, and some people that are between buildings. So, for staff, for someone that's, you know, upstairs teaching the fourth grade, they might see all those, this new face and not know who's walking around the building. So, we're gonna make sure that everyone knows whoever's in our building is supposed to be in our building. So, we have implemented that, while also asking our staff to wear their badges, so people know, if they don't know who you are, we also have a staff member that's made a nice little who's whose tree in our front lobby, so as new staff come along, put the faces up there, so we can get another connection point together, staff, as well as myself and the system principal are trying to do some of those things during our professional development and learning time of our staff. We've added a few exterior cameras, and we're gonna add a few more. And we also have tinting that's gonna be going in for some of our first grade classrooms. Particularly our classrooms as you pull in, because we have classrooms right when you pull into the parking lot, you can see right in, and then there are classrooms on the backside that when, you know, parents are waiting on the drop-off line, they can look right into those classrooms as well. Our goal is to, you know, eventually get all of them with that tint. But right now, we're focusing on what it seems to be the highest priority areas. We already have tinting in our front area as you come into the building, and some of our exterior doors for our gym as well, so just looking to-
Cameras motion-based?
No, they're, they're on all the time.
I mean, you know, if somebody moving around and it follows them at all?
No, they don't, our cameras don't follow, they just are in one position. And if you start zooming in, they get pixelated out. It's other conversations we have had as well, that eventually we might want to look at upgrading them. Because if, even if you have a car that's driving by, you can't really zoom in on the license plate unless it's in the right exact spot. But they are, and where they are, they're stationary, they don't, you can zoom in afterwards, but you can't zoom in and move in the moment.
So, when you're saying zooming, like if somebody want, if, for example, you, if you want to know who was in the, who was in-
Yeah, we don't want to talk too much about our security, we don't want the world to know what our security kind of plan is.
Well, I mean-
We want it to be top secret.
You know where top secret goes sometimes, you know?
Right.
It ends up places where you don't want it.
Well, no, but we don't want-
I was just wondering one-
We don't want to advertise in case malicious people hear that, then they would know how to search it.
But have a conversation with the superintendent or Butch or Dan, and they can go into the specifics.
Yep, and I can, everyone, I don't mind speaking to you about the capabilities of the cameras that we have currently.
I'm just wondering, because you, you know, you're saying you got windows, and I just wondered, what's the distance for the cameras?
One thing about cameras, Ron, it's kind of like your phone or your desktop or your, you know, tablet. The technology changes, and with that comes-
I know, technology-
Right, comes an update, you know, I mean, so, the original cameras we had, they were good at the time, and it's kind of like you gotta replace them every so often, the whole system, part of them. And that's under evaluation all the time, is it time to replace something? Is there pieces of it, you know, it's amazing what the result there, but. So, yeah, maybe an offline conversation about some of the other details. Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
So, this is our MCAS data from 2021, 2022. Blue meets or exceeds the goal, the proficiency, and gray is partially or not meeting. So, you know, we aren't, you know, we're not where we were in 2019, but we're making some growth, particularly in our math areas. And when you're looking at our, you know, subgroups for math as well, is reflective of that, seeing our growth. We're also looking at other data points this school year currently, looking at, we have our MAP assessment testing that happens three times a year. We just had recent winter MAP data release, so when we had our Teacher Professional Learning Day, that was a piece of what we looked at with our teachers, while they were also doing some data analysis of some tools that we provided for them to look at for some action planning for students. We also have our DIBELS data that is, you know, going over our students', you know, fluency with reading, phonemic awareness, so we provide that three times a year as well, so that's another data point. And we're also in the midst of doing student work analysis with our teachers, which is finding like a common problem or assignment you'll provide, providing it to your students, and then coming back and reviewing it as professionals and looking at what the trends are. And, you know, where students are scoring well, and what areas, you know, that maybe, in one area, some teacher's scoring better than another, how, what practice can we share? What are the trends that we can see that we are seeing some weaknesses, so we can try to support our students to make better achievement growth? So, and we are working to, you know, support our teachers to build that capacity, to support all the learners with the diverse population that we have in Northwest, with learners with our large students with disabilities, and English language learners and other struggling learners. And trying to make, and also pushing all of our learners, and, you know, if we have a student coming in that was forming, you know, above grade level, we make sure that we're pushing them to, to reach their full potential. So, this is a data point for last year that's very important, and we're also analyzing the other data points the district provides us with for the assessments that are provided, and also trying to do some common of assessments for ourselves as well within our school building. So, goals, some goals that we released this, you know, past year, and I don't know if I'm jumping ahead or not to our staff. We're, one of our goals that myself and the system principal, one of our first professional learning times with our staff, was around seventy percent of students meeting their MAP brick goal, meaning that the MAP will set, the student scored this in the fall, they should score this in the winter, and this in the spring, this will be adequate progress. So, our goal is that seventy percent of our students are gonna be meet their, their goals there. And our goal for, you know, chronic aptitism, which we'll get to that in a moment, is around reducing that number to fifteen percent. We are not on that number now, we're higher than that number. Last year, you know, we were at thirty percent, we're currently at twenty-five percent. We've reduced it by five percent, our goal is to continue to, on a few slides, I'll have some information, what we're trying to do about that, but our goal is not to sit there and say five percent, we want to get to that, you know, that fifteen percent, and that's what we're striving for for this year. I mean, my hope is to beat that, but I know that's, you know, say as we're in February and we're at the twenty-five, but we're still gonna be doing our due diligence to try to get that and try to beat that goal.
It's moving in the right direction, so that's what matters.
Well, yep, that's our plan, and we're, you know, I think it's all of us pulling together. Our teachers really make some nice communities for our students to, that they want to be there every day. So, for us, it's to try to take down those barriers that are preventing it, and trying to support families. And, you know, it was, it was a tough fall with mask off, coming back in the schools, with RSV, and the flu, and the stomach bug, and so we've recognized that, so some of these absences are very legitimate. And we want to make sure that we're supporting families that are running the barriers to get their students in, but also recognizing that there were some illnesses that went around that were contagious. And yes, if your student has a stomach bug, they should stay home. But a big piece of it, you know, that, you know, they're not in the building, they can't learn, so that's a big piece as well. So, we're trying to communicate that with our families, we also have an understanding that, you know, if there are outliers, so we gotta understand that, students that need to see the doctor for medical reasons and things like that as well, so we want to-
Yeah, if you can't, if you can't- Yeah, if you can't, if you can't, uh if you're not in school, you can't catch up.
Nope.
If you can't catch up, can't go forward. And that's the problem is not these these students. They're keep they're playing like catch up.
Mm hmm.
And China, right? Get to where they're supposed to be. So I mean, you can't do that if you're unless you're in the classroom, so.
No, you're absolutely right. Oh, I oh, this is um so we're not at a chronic absenteeism yet. I will speak about that in a moment. This is um some information on our English language learner students. Within our school. So our community has changed dramatically within the last decade. This was brought up at our last um whole whole district PD presenter was talking about, you know, within a decade demographic changed. Um so actually. Um made a change to some of our PD in the afternoon and looked up some of the demographic change in Northwest, presented that to staff. And our, you know, our ELL population grew from around seven to eight percent decade ago to over twenty five percent now, um which um. Isn't a negative or positive, it's just, it's just is what it is. Um and we see this, you know, as a strength for our community. We view our English language learners population as emerging bilinguals that, you know, is going to be a big strength for them as the as they're growing for um. Grow further further in their education and adulthood. And it creates this environment of learning within our buildings um where students are learning from each other, which is really special to see. Um and for our ELL population last year, forty eight percent of them progressed to meet their target towards English language proficiency. We've received some nice support from the district around staffing around that. Our numbers have grown, but while our numbers have grown, our staffing has grown to meet the needs of those students. So now it's about looking at, you know, the services we're providing and how how we can best provide those services, which is something that we have to do with all of our 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 staffing in our schools. But we do feel well supported in that that realm and um. We see this as, you know, a strength of our community as well and one that we we want to grow with them. So I spoke a little bit about the chronic absenteeism and I'm going to speak a little further. These are some of our areas of focus this past school year. I know I talked about those goals that were set. Um chronic absenteeism, some of the steps we have taken um this year. Um having ongoing communication with home. Um we're having bi-weekly wellness meetings and that's with our um counselors, school psychologists. Our nurse when she can, when she can attend and get coverage, um myself, the assistant principal. And at those meetings, um we'll discuss, we will and beginning there was very much so about the attendance. That will be a piece that we will bring up at those meetings. We'll also talk about the socio emotional needs, academic needs of the students within the school. This is a time that if there's something emergent, we'll talk about it to try to make sure we're getting supports for students. At these times, we're also, you know, assign outreach for families if there's a student that is having, you know. A difficulty of school attendance, uh schedule home visits. And we are relaunching our rapid check-in program that we used last year. So we did relaunch that at our last PD. That's a time for um there's, you know, research around um connections to adults in schools. And improving, you know, school outcomes. And I know at our our stage, it's a little different than high school. That, you know, there are other things that could lead to absence, but we're just trying to make sure that every kid has a has at least one positive connection within the building. And um trying to focus on the students that are referred to that that are outside of their classroom teacher. So who's that other person that maybe for five minutes can check in um with that student just and just to. Say happy to see you here today. That's great, you know, and you know, how are things going? All right, have a. Uh keep keep it up. Want to want to check in with you tomorrow. Um that's something that as we relaunch it, as we get names on the list. We reach out to families, get consents for that and then do some training with the people that are doing that, that knowing that this is really about making connections. But if things start going down the realm that you need, you know. It feels more serious and we got to connect with counselor, connect admin. This is not a counseling session or anything like that. This is about making connections with kids and not blurring those lines. So it's, you know. We did have that launch that last year, so we have some of those protocols as we're going to relaunch that this year. Uh attendance letters and tardy letters, we're sending those out um periodically. We just sent out another round of those. We do see. Tardiness improving. We do get outreach for families that there are legitimate reasons why some of those absences occur. So once again, we we understand that. We're not sending out those letters to uh wag our fingers at anybody. That's not the purpose. We're just sending out those letters. Um to what the mayor was saying, that if you're not in the not in the school, you're not in the seat, you can't learn. And. They know if they've been absent and some of these are legitimate, but we're still trying to get that message out. That, you know, we got a hundred and eighty days. We need them here for as many days as they can be here for. And also our assessment team, our assessment team, a lot of this fall has been focusing on um looking at different data that's been released by the district, but also looking at attendance data. And they have worked on some parent communication flyers that we um actually they had had translated and we're sharing that out. That's going to break it down into different graphics to send it a different way, just so you know, we can communicate in a different manner. This is not just the letters, not just the calls, so the home visits, like here's another piece of information that shows what happens when you miss. You know, one day, one day a month, you miss ten days. You miss two days a month, you miss twenty days. And just shows accumulating you. You come in an hour late, how many hours is that going to be for the for the school year and and that adds up over time? And just trying to provide the information to to families. Understand they have a lot to balance, but we're just trying to share what we have to try to, you know, improve those outcomes in that area. Our culture of achievement is is a bit an initiative that the district has been doing. The principals have been receiving training on that for the Lynch Leadership Academy. That's something that we're um doing ongoing for our staff. We're doing ongoing PD, we're implementing procedures and protocols for data analysis and analyzing student work. Spoke about that briefly earlier. We're focusing on ELA shifts in the science of reading. And um we're we're focused on trying to strengthen our whole group and small group instruction. Um our teachers, um they work extremely hard to meet the needs of our students. Um our teachers are, you know, they're engaging in this in this this PD to grow as professionals. While they, you know, they've always ha- already had a really strong toolkit. But you know, as as you know, the needs change, you got to keep on responding. So um. But you know, I do, you know, our teachers are the backbone of our school and um. You know, our, you know, our teachers are terrific. I I and I also believe our students and our families are terrific. So I think that, you know, we're just trying to row in the same direction. To to move in the same direction. Notice, I'm saying a lot about the PDs, but that's not to be a negative about, you know. The capacity or other work that's going on in our classrooms. If you keep walking around the classrooms, you see learning happening in the classrooms. And it's our job as the, you know, the district and the administrators to make sure that, you know, we're we're capitalizing on all all those minutes and all that time. To push kids towards grade level curriculum, push kids towards the standards to to close, close those gaps. Um because if you walk through the buildings, you're not going to see, you know, kids. Running amok and everything like that. You're going to see kids engaged and it's us to try to, you know, work with our teachers to make sure that, you know, we keep on improving that achievement within our building. So um I did have a conversation that I had on Friday with a supervising um practitioner uh from Fishburg State University. This past semester, we've added um two student teachers within our building. And maybe four or five um pre-pract students who come in and get hours to come observe, observation hours. So she wanted to share a reflection that one of her student teachers had within her classroom. And she, um the student teacher shared that um within, you know, coming to our school, observing one of our teachers. She shared in her reflection all the differentiation, the building schema and the scaffolds evident within one class period of that teacher's classroom. Who she'd been in for one day. And she said that that student teacher um. Wrote a whole semester within a different school, within a different district with similar population within our school and outwitnessed um. Any of those instructional moves for the needs of the diverse learners within another school. And she witnessed that in one one class period within our teacher and the professor wanted to come highlight that to like share like your your teachers are. Are working hard and my student teachers are noticing from when they've come to other schools and coming here. And you know, when I'm speaking about diverse learners, speaking about those students of IPs, the ELL merging bilinguals, the, you know. And other struggling learners. And I just want to highlight that I don't believe that's an outlier. I mean, that's more the norm in Northwest that our teachers are working extremely diligent to meet the needs of these students and we. You know, we, and when I say we, myself, Ab- Abby Lane, the assistant principal, our job is to support, to help. Them keep moving that achievement. Cause I I do, it's definitely not a um case of lack of effort. Or lack of trying to provide the supports. So that's, you know, our job and we know that. So we take that seriously and we're trying to work with the district to. To make that come to fruition. So now, now that I've shared that, we can get to some of the the lighter, funner things as well going on Northwest. This is um, this isn't a complete synopsis. Even when I was coming over, I'm like, this is going to get too big because I can keep on adding things on here. But some of the things we have done already this school year, ice cream socials, Bulldog Bingo, our book fair. Our pasta supper, Jingle Bell Fair, winter concert. We're going to have an upcoming spring concert. Um we were fortunate last year to have a winter costume before the school year or spring concert before the school year released. Therapy dog visits, um field trips where all grades have been scheduled. Spring events um that we're working on with the PTO, um fun run, food drive, um get decorating cookies and cupcakes. Read Across America is another event that we're going to be launching with our with our school community, literacy night, ELL celebration among others. So I do have some slides of some of these events that have occurred this year. So as we see right here, Bulldog Bingo, which I can say that I was the bingo polar announcer and um I really. Really enjoyed that more than I more than I expected. I was like, we can do another Bulldog Bingo next week. This was awesome. So. And I was getting heckled by some of the students. You that's the uniform to call a four. Sorry, it wasn't a four. It wasn't on there. And we also had Mount Watch U.S.A. Community College coming for Tall Tales and Heroes performance, which was nice for our students, our first grade students to take part in that. Um pres- um that play during the school day earlier this year, October, maybe October, Novemberish when that occurred. This is some pictures of our terrific pasta supper, um a great event that we relaunched since the, you know, pandemic. Several people um within this room were there and it was a really terrific event and um very fortunate for all the volunteers. And um parents and um teachers that really pulled together to make that event terrific. Um and. Some great cooking going on and great service happening. And we had the Boy Scouts that were volunteering their time for seating and um. Teachers that were being waiters and waitresses. So it was a really nice event to connect with families. And speaking about events, um I mentioned this before, but we've had great attendance this year at our our open house. Um we've had great attendance at mostly all of our events that we've had this year. And we are very fortunate to have a very engaged PTO who plans terrific events for families. And like I mentioned before, our our community does want to connect in person. So we're striving to try to to offer these events for families. So we can connect in person. Um I think it's really, you know, the important healing part after this time when we were isolated from each other. So we're trying to do our due diligence to. Hear what families want want to see and try to make those events um happen within our building. And we're anticipating great attendance on these events that we will be offering in the spring. So uh this right here is our therapy dog visits. Uh this is new to Northwest. I think the school committee and the school um for approving the therapy dogs. And the school department for pursuing therapy dogs. Our community is very excited and benefits greatly from the service. Um the kids, the kids love it. They ask when the dogs are coming back. And um, you know, as you can see on some of those pictures, it's evident that um our children love it. So um. That's been a really nice piece, something that um I was envious of in a previous district when I heard some of my former colleagues that they had a therapy dog and now. At least we, you know, might not be there all day, but at least every other week we have we have a therapy dog there. Our school psychologist coordinates with the um with um Angela Thomas around which classrooms and who which students to see. So um it's kind of, it's been seamless, but it's been really nice addition to our school community this year. School pride days. So um we're having several school pride days this year. This is an example of fancy day. Um this um, as you can see, the young ladies, they're very fancy and the student on the right, he told me that he dressed as me for fancy day. So um I actually saw him today and he's like, yeah, that was me. I was dressing as you. So um that was a really nice um. It was really fun. I know our teachers really enjoyed it. The kids really enjoyed it. So um we're trying to build out other other uh spirit days. We have a kindness day coming up. We're going to do a. Uh we had a sports apparel day where you let students know that no equipment or helmets, but sports apparel come in. We just don't, you know, not going to be doing football practice in the hallways. And we have um superhero day coming up as well. So um and if you want to participate, let me know. I'll let you know when they are. You can come on by if you're cape on if you want. So. But we're trying to build up these other um throughout the school year. Um it was really nice when we did our fancy day and the kids were really excited for it. So we're trying to build some more of these just to, you know. Make it fun and get um and get the kids excited. Um this is um something that our PBIS team has taken on. We have a PBIS team within our building. We launched it last year. Um and it's voluntary. They meet after school a couple of times a month. They discuss. Incentives for students. They discuss initiatives within the school, ways that we can, you know, uh build um. Socio emotional growth within our students and also ways that we can spread share this like this. So we are very fortunate that we have a dedicated teachers. It's open to everybody um that can come to it. And we're fortunate that like a core group continues to come to try to plan that for our school community and they do it. You know, um because they think it's necessary. It's not any type of additional um stipend or anything that they receive. And we appreciate that they do that for us, for our students and for our school community. This is our winter concert this past year. Um it was, as you can see, very well attended. It um it was terrific and we're excited for our um for our spring concert. Students um within our building are very excited about band and chorus. It was very small last year when we launched it. And this year, you know, we we were getting close to capacity for our our band and chorus. And we are very fortunate that we have a terrific music teacher who's really grown that program. And you know, it it's it's a good problem. And if we get to the point where we have a capacity issue, then it's a brainstorming issue. Um but it's not, you know, it's a it's a positive that students. Um students have come before school to practice their instruments. They stay after school to do chorus or some of the other pieces. So these students are dedicating time outside of the school. To um be a part of this and it's. I I saw another additional piece, I believe it's our band and I think our chorus as well, that they're going to be doing some um some performances at the high school, which is going to be really exciting. Um I saw that released. I I hope I didn't. Say, I hope I didn't. I thought it was public information. Maybe it's not. Um but it was, um I hope our students know and if they don't know, then then go to sleep because. Six forty five, I guess, don't go to sleep. But that's exciting and I I know I'm excited for that and for our for our students and um I think that's only going to help grow the arts. Broad Lemonster, I think the arts are very important and we are fortunate to have a um some terrific. Arts teachers within our building, a terrific music teacher who's really, who's in her second year, but she's phenomenal and really is growing this program. Our reef contest, this is something that our staff did um around um the holiday time. Uh staff participated in it. They uh myself and superintendent Deacon judged the reefs um and afterwards the reefs were donated to the Sunrise of Lemonster. Um and um that's kind of been the annual thing that one of our teachers has organized and we're also going to be donating Valentines to the Sunrise of Lemonster as well. Um those are going to be student generated Valentines uh for for teachers whose classes create those to try to bring some, you know, cheer and joy over there as well. Um and as I mentioned before, you know, there was a. Uh food drive earlier this year that one of our counselors organized that we were donated to a a couple of um food shelters. So um I think it's nice to try to, you know, we we do have a population within our school, you know. That have some need, but it's also nice to, you know, show that we're going to give back to others as well. Discovery Kitchen, this is an initiative for chart wells. It's food uh exploration for our students. Chart, they come in, they teach a lesson. And then expose the students to different types of food. Um and currently, you know, five of our first, five of our seven first grade classrooms have participated in the Discovery Kitchen. Had to reschedule one of the events, so they're going to come back in February, I guess that's now to do um. Um I think one more of our kindergarten rooms, classrooms and the other two first grade classrooms. And the plan is to hopefully hit each one of our grade levels. Um as you see, it's in the CAF. Um they went around to all the classrooms. I don't know how many classrooms we had, but we were able to be flexible and we can use the cafeteria and you can do two classrooms. So you're not, you know, coming for. You know, um the seven days straight or going to this classroom or that classroom. So we're trying to, you know, bring this experience to our students while also doing it in like a flexible, efficient way that's going to work um for everybody. So they'll. Hopefully get the first grade done, roll out to the second grade, get up to the third, fourth and fifth. That's that's the hope and the goal for this year. And um I guess in closing, um exciting things are are happening at at Northwest, um learnings occurring in classrooms. Um we need to continue to refine our focus to ensure we're not only meeting the needs of our students, but we're pushing them to meet their academic potential. Um our students are highly skilled and myself and Abby Lane, the assistant principal and the district are working to support our teachers in meeting the needs of our diverse community. Um at Northwest, we have great teachers, great students and terrific families. And as the slide says, um together we will succeed. So um I appreciate your time. If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to. Do my best to try to answer them or jot down, jot them down if I don't have something immediately and get it to superintendent Deacon too.
Thank you, Josh.
I think you pretty much covered it all. Ron, did you have something?
I just had two questions. At the beginning, you know, when you were showing the the um. Basketball court.
Yep.
Did they say what the. Exploration date is on? How long is it good for and did they give you any uh? Instruction how to. Keep it in good condition, you know, different because it's new now, so you have to use some kind of. Cleaning agents on it, correct? No?
No, so I know they shared that information with with Butch um from facilities. I know they were very clear around not having. No, so I know they shared that information with Butch from facilities. I know they were very clear around not having food or drinks there. I know that we did purchase some rugs for the for the parks and rec. So when they come in from the outside, that, you know, it's not going to bring the dirt onto the floor right there. And I know that you know, our custodians are following whatever those procedures are that Butch, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but I know they did give direct instructions about how to keep that up to the best looking floor. I do not know what the expiration date is for it. We're hoping that, you know, it's going to be there for a long time. Looks wonderful now and our custodians are doing a great job of maintaining it. And we have, you know, a gym teacher who does a really nice job as well of maintaining it and letting us know what he needs if he sees something that could damage it.
The other thing you were saying about special meetings, the health meetings, I believe.
The wellness, the wellness, yes.
How many students attend? How many times a week? Or you said biweekly?
Yes.
But is it held in the afternoon or during the day? How many students? How many teachers? Is it? I guess basically from my, my little mind, it must be labor intensive.
So for those meetings, what we're doing is we're, we're meeting with and we meet with these staff throughout the week, but that's a time to dedicate to meet with. We have three counselors within our building. We have a school psychologist in our building and we have a nurse. We want to give we reserve time as myself and the assistant principal to meet with them as a team to discuss, you know, initiatives within the building, school building, and also talk about if there's something burning they haven't been able to speak to us about or something we need to share. Say there's a student in a certain grade level that we need to share across each other. So we try to have that dedicated time so we can talk about the chronic absenteeism, but also other social emotional needs within the building. However, I will say that, you know, we are in constant communication with those staff members. And we also think it's valuable that we set aside time to put some agenda items on there and meet as a group. So we're all on the same page. And we can share information, try to have an agenda so we can go through it and discuss needs of students or needs of the school. But there aren't any students there. We will, we might discuss students, but there's not any students within that meeting. It's just the adults there.
Just the adults.
Yes.
Oh, I it just said biweekly. So it's every means every, every two weeks.
Yes.
Am I wrong?
Yep. It's actually, we met today. So it's every other Monday.
Every other Monday. But it's, it's the teachers meet up, but there's no meeting with the students.
No, because they're discussing students.
I, I, I get that. I understand that. But, you know, I guess it's got to be me. It has to be me. I mean, the either Josh's question, Josh's statement or Dean's statement. We're talking here as adults about the students. Do they know we're talking about them? I know you're looking at me like I got three heads, but seriously, if we're not
One's enough on it.
Well, yeah, if, you know, maybe it's me, maybe I
Well, ask the question in a different way. I think I know where you're going with it.
Go ahead. If you think you know, you're better, if you think you can read my mind, it's illegal and all. Go ahead.
It's, it's really to talk about sort of the benefit of the resources, kind of what they're seeing out there. You know, what, what are they experiencing out there and what can the, what can the principal do to help them and the assistant principal? So, I mean, it's about what, what, it's about issues. So
Right.
It's not
What?
It's something that the benefit is the outcomes are really what's going to benefit the student, right?
I get that, but, you know, he said it, they meet up. The adults are meeting up and they're talking about the kids. Well, but who's there, who's there to talk to the kids? That's my question. Am I wrong to ask that question?
Maybe because they titled it wellness, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's not the, maybe there's a better name for it.
Come on, someone jump in, stop.
What it is that you do, but
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that what's going to happen is in those discussions, they're thinking of resources and ways to help students with various issues or problems or challenges. So they're coming up with answers and then they can implement it or let the families know that these resources are out there or hook them up or make referrals or make accommodations in the classroom to support the students. And so that's the purpose.
I guess I'm, I must be very twisted because
But on the other hand, Ron, approach it this way, right? Come, come at the other way. The other thing that, that Dan talked about was that they try, they try to have blocks, say of students and somebody within the building that is engaging with them. That's kind of watching out, seeing what's going on. They've been out sick. Have they noticed things that aren't right? So in other words, it's a big building, but it's their way of individualizing and having somebody as that team person, that contact. Kind of an extension of what we're talking about here. So it's really observatory really from the student standpoint and not, and that's the purpose of this. It doesn't mean they aren't doing other things that engage the students in the school because they are. I think we just saw a million and one things.
I get that.
This is just a more observant, more, an observation of what's going on in their schools and their students and ways that they can help and make recommendations that will filter back through the school. So it's not meant to be, you know, the student council or any, which I'm sure they're doing all of those things. We just saw all of the things.
All I asked was this.
I heard and I tried to explain it to you. Is that a fair representation?
Something, is there something I'm not reading right?
It's probably the, the title of the, the group meetings, but really to
There are well, is there a concern that you have that kids are being spoken about or gossiped about? Like, do you feel like there's some?
He's the one that said it. I'm just reading what I read was up over there. Wellness meetings biweekly. He said it's a group of of teachers. They sit there and they talk about the kids, but do the kids know they're being talked about? That's my
So
Students, but
It's like we're legislating Big Brother's watching.
So I, that's
But more about the issues, that's all.
So that's not how I perceived it. I perceived it as it's the staff checking in on how kids were doing in an informal environment. So
Kid, that's my, that's my
They're, they're not there to prosecute the kids. They're there to check in on how someone's doing.
I didn't say nothing about prosecuting. I just said, there's nobody there. And yes, the teachers are saying they observe this, they observe that. That's fine. But the kid doesn't have any, the kid, boy or girl, doesn't have anybody speaking for them.
That they're all there speaking for them.
If there's an issue, if there's another issue, that's, that's individualized or a particular student. You just explain, I have a school psychology, I mean, they have a team of people. That's an individual thing. These, they're talking sort of broader things here, things that are overall to the school. So if they're, then that parent and that student they have plenty to say if, if, if there's a particular issue.
That's all. I was just
Yeah, it's not a, not a bad question. Just okay. Thank you very much.
I really appreciate. Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
When we're talking about, I don't know if anybody's seen the, the federal government's going to change the nutrition, you know, the, you know, what goes on in the cafeteria. And I said this when we first started to do this because they did, I think President Obama made a really avid attempt at changing what goes on, but it's not as easy as just a blanket, hey, we're, you know, we're not going to allow sugar in the place because that's not going to solve it. It's providing all healthy alternatives, which I think Chawell is well aware of because when I walk around and look in those barrels, you know, when they first started this thing, you know, it was apples, all the things that are good for you. And it's, it takes a, it's a, it's, it's not just about a policy change. It's really about just a change of culture and what you eat, what instead of, you know, drinking, whatever you eat this and and then Ron, you want to talk about the individual choice. When they, they get rid of the Suzikus. And then there's a student protest. But we'll listen to it. But we'll listen to it.
Because as you were saying about this food thing.
Look at, we got mad here. Who did a better job at representing students, everything?
I know, but you know,
You covered it all tonight.
Talking about the food change. Look what happened in Montana and Idaho. They raised a ruckus because the food that they were only supposed to have, it wasn't enough for the kids who worked on the farm and went to school in the
Well, they own the farms. They should be eating real well. All right. So we're going to move now on to mid-year assessment.
Hey, Koska.
Imagine that. We're talking prom and mid-year assessment all in one night.
Oh, boy.
And graduation.
I'm gonna, sooner than we think. We're halfway, right?
Every Sunday message already because I'm getting
The hundredth day is coming up too, to Thursday, I think.
Next Friday.
Yeah. Oh, is it so next Friday?
It's the hundredth day.
Ooh, yeah. So I'm here to give an update on our winter data. So that's our Dibbles, our MAP and I Ready, which is our middle school six through eight data. Oh gosh, I had to click and move. Hold on. This is gonna be
Don't we usually have Kyle running?
Yeah, I guess, but Kyle's giving us this. Now, maybe he doesn't want to be our friend anymore and click, but okay, so in Dibbles, which is our fluency and some comprehension piece. Those are our five, our four elementary schools and pre-street data for that that we talk about. And just to remind you that this is just an assessment of our basic early literacy skills. It's a set of procedures that our teachers do with our students. They design, it's a short one-minute fluency measure that can be used to detect risk and monitor the development of early literacy and reading skills. Each subtest has been thoroughly researched because we only do research based here with Ms. Pola and demonstrated to be reliable and a valid indicator of early literacy development. Our results are used for, to evaluate individual student development and also for our teachers to look at grade level feedback and to help with some of their instructional objectives when looking at fluency. So this year, our fall to winter, we talked about, I just shared and, and showed you that here's our beginning. What you saw in the beginning, you didn't see kindergarten in the beginning because we didn't have kindergarten done the last time we presented this. And then now in the winter benchmark. So students that move to the green and the blue is what you see and the students move to grade level core. So kindergarten, obviously with all that nice presentation and what they do every day, there's a plus twenty-six growth, which is really what we expect in the kindergarten from beginning to middle. First grade, there was a five percent. Second grade, there was a six percent. So students went out of the red or the yellow and moved to the green or blue. In third grade, we had a slight decline. But that's also, it's not, it's, it's a little typical in the winter because they're learning how to read from going from learning how to read to, I mean, reading to learn. So they slow down because they want to comprehend and they want to answer the questions correctly at the end. So they don't read as fast. And then fourth and fifth, I don't, you guys have it in front of you. We did a plus four percent in fourth grade. In fifth grade, the reading gets a little bit more slower because they are thinking about the comprehension and the, the reading selections are a little bit difficult. So we are still overall moving in the right direction as an all. We were up moving about five to 10% of our kids up to the core and the core support. And as you can see, our red got smaller and so did our yellow. So in a lot of areas. So we're hoping that we continue this process and now, of course, again, I'll I will report out in May or June, depending on when we do this, around the end results. But we're moving in the right direction and I think that you know, students are getting the foundational skills they need as we keep moving. Yes, Ronnie.
You know, these changes you were showing from the, at the, at the third grade and then the fifth grade, is that consistent with the developing of their, of their
Right. So in third grade, they're learning how to read, right? And they're still doing that in the beginning months of third grade. And then they're also learning, reading to learn. So they have to move their so now they're concentrating on reading and trying to make sure they know it. So it does slow the process down. So where fluency is fast and, you know, how fast and how well you can read, they sat slowing down a little bit in third grade because they're starting to read to learn. So they want to make sure they're understanding what they're reading.
The beginning, they're reading words.
Right. They're not taking it all in.
But the school bus, right?
Critical skills.
So yes, right.
It was all timed.
So this is all timed. So they slow it down because they really want to do that piece. And this is, like I said, one piece of our data that we use. We go back to MAP, the measurement of academic progress. Once again, that is our K through five. Just to give you a quick update of that, that's also given three times a year. The assessment is adaptive. So as students answer correctly, the questions get more difficult. If the students answer incorrectly, the questions get a little bit easier or go back down to their level. Adaptability allows for strengths and opportunities for growth to be identified for each student to determine how to best support their learning and their individualized instruction. So that's what we use this for.
Can, can I guess you If you, if you get stuck on something, if the student gets stuck on something
Yeah.
And you say they kind of back up.
They can move forward again if they get them right.
They kind of approach it a little bit differently because sometimes about how you ask the question, they want to make sure they get it before they move on.
Right.
So does that software
So if they
Diagnose it and say, you know what, this student's stuck on this. Let's try to explain it to them a different way.
I, I honestly can't say that that's happens because we don't get to see the actual questions. But if you go back and you answer, they'll give you to the next level and they'll give you. So yes, it kind of is a back way. It might necessarily be, like you said, in a different way, or it might give them a couple of easy ones to then go back to the next question that's similar like
I gotta think that that's the way of the, I mean,
Yeah.
We should be looking at all that
We have a hard time explaining, trying to figure out what's, how it's being explained to us.
Well, sometimes it's a cultural thing. Sometimes it could be a, so you want to come back, take another, let me explain it a little bit differently, right? And then sometimes, yeah, I get it and then you move on, right? Math is a lot like
It's been a while since I've seen the questions, but from what I remember, they give you questions on, like, it seemed like they were giving me this questions on the same topic. And then once, like, once I became more confident in that, it almost seemed like, that was what I thought was like, I just remember at the time, I was like, oh, this is super cool. Like, I, I, I almost wished other forms of testing were similar to it because it felt like it was listening to me.
Right.
And like understood.
As, as they develop this, it'll be like texting on your phone. It'll fill in half of what you're, they know what the next they know what the next word's going to be, right? So good. That's good.
Yeah. So MAP achievement is we compared the scores from fall to winter by looking at percentile ranking. So for an example, the percentile shows how well the student performed on the test compared to students with a similar ability. Okay. So there's an example there. A student with a seventy-seven percentile ranking means that that student performed better than seventy-seven percent of the student peers that he, who took the test at the same time. Does everyone understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I I, my, my my dirty question is as you gave the examples, this scored better than seventy percent of his peers. Now that's from fall to winter, correct?
Yes.
What happened? What happens? How do you, can you just prevent from dropping back? Is there a leveling? Is there some times where that, that kid who scored seventy-seven? How do, how do you prevent them from falling back? Does they fall back?
Hopefully yes. Well, sometimes they do, Ron, depending on how well they test in the, in the spring. Sometimes they go even further ahead. So let's look at the data so then you can see a little bit where we did have some positive and we did have, you know, a couple of fallbacks. Okay? So the next one is our K through two. So if you look at math and you look at reading, students that were in the sixty-one to ninety-nine percentile, so they scored that during, at the same student ability that, well, in math, they were thirty-eight percent and in reading, they were thirty-eight percent. So thirty percent of our students in K through two placed in the sixty-one percentile of, or above in reading and math. Okay. And then we had twenty percent of students who, who fell in the forty-one to sixty. And we still have forty-two percent of our students who fell in the first of forty. Okay. And third grade to fifth grade, our achievement, forty-six percent of our students in grades three through five placed in the sixty-one percentile or above in reading. So if you can see there, we still have our students who are still making some growth, staying the same and moving along with the line. And there's a few setbacks, but mostly in the positives moving forward. Okay. And this is also, if we look at our math growth, we talk about math growth. We will compare growth from fall to winter by looking at the change in our students' RIT score. Everyone remembers what the RIT score is. We have our RASH unit, a measurement scale developed to simplify the interpretation of a test score. The score represents a student's achievement level. The RIT growth is a difference in the RIT score from fall to spring. So each student in the fall gets a RIT score and then they get a, how far is that student going to go in the spring? So it could be eight points. It could be nine point growth. And then they get a, how far is that student gonna go in the spring? So it could be eight points. It could be nine-point growth. It could be twelve, twelve-point growth. If we move on to here, percentages of students who met their growth projection. This is great. So in math, we had fifty percent of our students meet their growth projection just for the winter. And we had fifty-seven percent of our kids hit the growth projection. So like I said, they get a, a score in the fall and then they get what they're looking for in the, um, spring. And some of our kids are already there and they're making their growth. Any questions on this slide or? Nope. Oh, it's a good question. Um, I think that, um, in fifth grade math, they are, um, still like when they look at some of the standards that are being tested then, they haven't quite got to yet because we don't forget we have a, a kind of a curriculum, um, scale. And our, our, they don't take MCAS in math until April, May. So our teachers really are diligent about the first three units around the number sense and the algebraic thinking and that piece. So I think some of our kids might not do as well as they move up for, further. But I think that when you see the scores in the spring, they kind of jump right back up again because they've gotten the curriculum pieces. It's really, you know, we're only three and a half months into our curriculum before we re, redo them again. And then they have from there until June. So they have six months, um, in the spring. So I think that as we keep moving forward, um, and, you know, we're just hoping that, um, we're still bouncing back and we just want to make sure that we're moving forward and we are moving forward. We know the students are getting what they need and, um, are moving forward. So. On point, yeah.
So I have to remember back in the fifth grade, things start to get serious. No, really, they do. All of a sudden, it's like less fun.
Yeah.
Things start to get serious, right? I mean, that's, and it shows it right there, right? This is for real.
Um, in the middle school level, we use iReady. So iReady is similar to math. It's a given three times a year. It's another adaptive assessment. Um, students, and we already went through what that means to you guys. So you guys know that piece. It allows students to work at their level as they move forward. So we'll compare scores from fall to winter by looking at students' performance on the diagnostic in relation to their grade level. So this is a little bit different. So they're determined by the students' scale scores upon completion of the diagnostic and create, and correlated to their grade level performance.
Is. And. Can the student jig the stu- student jig the test?
No, no.
See how it's at the, as a student answers correctly?
Can a student sit there and just push buttons?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It says here, as a student answers correctly, the question gets more difficult. As a student answer incorrectly, the question get easier.
Mm-hmm.
So can the kid jig the test? So that way they just go, keep on answering.
To go easier?
Yeah.
So would the teachers monitor this?
Male or female?
Um.
Does that happen?
Yeah, it does happen sometimes when kids really don't want to do it, Ronnie, and they just hit and they do this, this. But teachers have the ability to stop them. The teacher would stop them and say, let's start over again and let's try our best. This is important. This is for your independency and what you need.
You just start pushing buttons. I guess, I guess, I guess it's my fault and I, I admit it. I admit it. It's almost like Woody Allen's here. Because if they know that they answered, they answered correctly, correct, incorrectly, and the answers get easier.
Right. But every. But every time they answer correctly, so if they answer the easy question correctly, it's going to get a little bit harder.
A little bit harder. It brings them back up.
It's gonna go back and forth so that it doesn't really accomplish anything.
And it doesn't end them early. Like, it doesn't mean that they're gonna be done early.
Because how does a teacher figure it out that the kid is jigging the test? The software will tell them.
Yeah, the software on their computers, it has literally all twenty-five students. And you can have students who just go boom, 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 and they're like, stop. Like, they stop the test and they won't let the student keep going. And they go, we're gonna start you over again. Let's try this and, and take good time. Kind of like. There's little firewalls, but yeah.
They say, is this one clearer than the other? If you fool around, well, you'd be walking into doors when you leave. So eventually, you know, the software is set up. They can tell. He just said if they, they swear too much, there's a firewall. It's gonna say, all right, we know what you're doing. We want you to take it serious and off you go.
Most kids want to take pride in their work and do the best they can.
And the people designing the software are well aware of all of this. The software is only.
That's worth, I mean, the data they use, teachers use to place them in what they think they need for individual and small groups. So those kids know that they want to be where they want to be. They don't want to be in that group that might have a teacher in, in there for thirty minutes with them. So, um, I think that they, especially at the middle school, is a little bit more cautious around, um, that piece. Elementary, I think sometimes it's just a learning curve. Do you hear any me?
I guess it, have you ever tried to jig the test?
The what test?
To jig the test, that any, any of these.
Oh, I tried them?
Yeah.
No, I just watched them. Don't answer.
Did anyone here ever try to jig a test? I tried a couple of bank accounts to see if I could get login, but I couldn't get in. I kept trying every number.
No, because you know what? Ronnie, if we jigged a test, my parents wouldn't be happy with it.
I don't want to take it again.
No, that's like I said, my parents wouldn't want me to, would kill me if I came home.
Taking tests, blocking them on purpose to see what happens.
So let's look at the data. Let's look at the data because this data is really outstanding. And we need to look at.
I was a model student, so I never thought of that stuff.
Give kudos to sixth, seventh and eighth grade because the achievement in iReady is, um, is really good. The teachers really worked hard. The kids really worked hard. So if you look at the, um, grade six, about forty percent of our students are on or above grade level in math and reading. And that's the scores of what they positively went up from. So the, the, um, negative. I mean, the parentheses around, they would increase by thirteen percent in math and eight percent in reading from the fall. Uh, one grade level below. We had students, um, as you can see, they moved up so that you have, um, thirty-three percent and twenty-seven percent. And then, um, in the math, we lost thirteen percent of our students in the low level in the two or more grade levels where they moved up to the levels that are more positive. And we're only down to thirty-three percent in reading at the two or more grade level. So, um, we are closing the achievement gap in math and reading by decreasing the percentage of students below grade level by fourteen percent in math this past, um, time and eight percent in reading, which we were excited about. That's great movement in, um, in the sixth grade. In grade seven, similar, as you can see the data. Um, on and above, we have almost half, forty-seven percent of our seventh graders are on or above grade level in reading. Um, we are closing the achievement gap in math and reading by decreasing the percentage of students below grade level by twelve percent. So again, we are moving the students forward by the plus signs in the green and the, um, orange and the red is in the negative. That means those students are out and above. So we're really excited about that. So it's a kudos again to grade seven in math and reading and their scores. In grade eight, the thirteen percent increase in students on or below grade level in math. We are closing the achievement gap in math and reading by decreasing the percentage of students below grade level by ten percent on average. So we're really excited about that. Um, so just like we did in MAP. Percentage of students who are meeting the typical growth. In sixth grade, we had forty-five percent of our students. And in reading, we had forty-nine percent. Seventh grade, we had forty-two and fifty-seven. In eighth grade, we had fifty-five percent to fifty-seven percent. Although, uh, grade eight students showed the most growth with our, over half our students achieving one year's worth of growth in the midterm. So we were psyched about that. So, um.
But can't you see the, I mean.
We can see the up.
Right. But I mean, you see where the software is now, but I can see down the road that as a student develops maybe an issue, they'll probably pop out like, here's a reading list. There are books you probably shouldn't have got.
That's my next slide. So when they get these results. Um, we have the pathway on iReady. So students are in their individualized instruction pathway. So this is, um, part of why we see the growth. They use the wind block where kids are in their ELA in their math pathways, twenty minutes a day during their wind block. So this has also pushed students to learn and see, um, where they were at and increase their, um, their standard-based instruction through this pathway. So it's individualized. It's right for them. It's all.
Would be different depending.
Student has a different thing to work on.
Incredible. I mean, just.
So this is part of our personalized learning in the iReady for six through eight.
But to see that at the middle school level.
Oh, we are so excited.
For us.
This just started this, um, last year. We did the first year. No.
What's new?
No. So that is, um, we have some good, you know, like good things. We have some things that we're gonna work on. But, you know, as you hear the principles, we're still continuing with our culture of achievement, moving forward in our science of reading. Um, and teachers are really working hard around, um, moving those ELA, um, scores and keeping students to be reading fluently and, um, um, we're, we're trying to get back there. So if there's any questions I can ask right now?
Think we asked.
You can answer?
No, no.
Okay, perfect. I even like that even better.
I just did my individualized assessment on you and you get a, uh, as Bob Savatelli would say, nobody gets an A.
No one gets an A from Bob. No, I wouldn't.
Gets an A.
All right, all right. An A minus, maybe?
No, B plus.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Renee.
Okay, on the next issue, the, um, um, school committee goals. So inside here is a sample from the sandwich public schools. They did a really nice job. There are a couple of different ones here.
Yeah, different perspectives.
So I think the best thing, and then we have some templates here. So if the policy committee doesn't ma- mind, if you could take the two. And I think what we're looking for is measurable but realistic goals, not setting, saying, we're gonna get to ninety-eight percent in two weeks. That's not realistic and measurable. So if that committee doesn't mind, kind of incorporating this and incorporating, kind of merging the superintendent's goals with our goals. So we're on the same page, no pun intended. And then I think as this, we go, as we begin the process of the superintendent's goals again, then we have our goal set at the same time. So we hammer that out as the, I mean, we should, I mean, we're all in touch. I don't think anybody's goals are drastically different from the superintendent's. I think we're all on the same page, but.
And I would say if anybody who's not on the policy subcommittee wants to.
Jump in.
Jump and give me an email or something, um, that they want any feedback on any of these or something else, feel free um, to let us know and then we can bring it up in our policy subcommittee meeting.
I think it's great. For the next meeting too, could we get some of the current data on some of these goals, like the current, where we are with the attendance, where percentages and stuff like that? Just so we can.
Sure.
The mayor's point, um, realistic, you know?
Know the where you're starting from, right?
Exactly. Good point.
You don't know where you're going until you know where you're starting from, right? All right, we approve of the minutes, July, January seventeenth. Has anybody had a chance to examine them?
I make a motion to approve.
All right. Second, any errors or omissions? Yes, sir. Okay. And third, by Ron. And errors or omissions? We don't appear to have any. All in favor? Signify in usual manner. Those opposed? I just want to say, all of, I'm picking my phone once in a while because people are saying the quality of the sound is a thousand times better, not a hundred. That's measurable and quantify, right? So they're like, it doesn't sound like Star Wars. If you know what I mean. I won't make any more references tonight to Star Wars. Okay, we'll move now on to policy subcommittee meetings. Now, do we have any for?
Yeah, we didn't meet this, uh, tonight. We meet, um, before our next meeting.
All right. Anything on the finance?
Well, you gave Melanie, um, you keep telling her to take a day off, so she took a day off.
A beautiful time.
But you can see that in our general fund, we're still at a balance of four million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. So we're sitting very well for the beginning of February. And all of our revolving funds are lush and we are not in the negative on any of our accounts at this point.
And no warrants?
No warrants this time.
And you, Melanie?
I think the, one of the areas that we have to watch with the Mass Association of School Committees and Superintendents is, and this is what I thought, and it's not to say I told you so or anything, but this millionaire's tax. It, you know, it's like when they said, well, we're gonna, it's gonna, you know, this is what we're gonna use it for. The commercials were gray. But now, think about it. Everything is some way indirectly or directly related to education. So everyone's sort of, and I'm not saying they're any better or worse, you know, um, lobby groups or whatever lobbying for that money. But I think the, the areas that most of the school committees talked about was putting money back into public education, putting into this education. So I think it's important that we stay in touch with the Mass Association of School Committee and the Superintendents about, hey, let's, let, let's remember. Because there's higher educate, I have no issue at all, but the last report that we got, there are so many people vying for this money. We're all gonna end up with about fifty dollars if everybody gets that. And not that all these areas aren't important, but I think it was passed with a certain. Yeah, I mean, I think when people went to the polls and voted, they thought this is where the money was gonna go. And I think we need to keep the legislature back and focus with, this is where we thought it was gonna go. I think they know too, but I'm, I'm sure they're getting like, from every imaginable group you can imagine said, hey, education, this is education, training, education, it's all in there. So. All right, obsolete equipment?
We found more.
We found things.
I think it was possible.
We found a Radio Shack ISL two, two thirty-five from nineteen sixty-two.
We need a vote to dispose.
I make a motion to dispose of.
All right, motion. We have a second by Ron, who's still got his Radio Shack SL two, three, eight-track tape deck. And all in favor? All right, thank you. And new or old business?
May I just interject?
Yeah.
In new and old business, I just want to make a clarification. The Black Heritage Gala, this is the eleventh year.
The ninth.
It's actually the ninth on Thursday at six o'clock in the auditorium. Okay.
The food is just, I'm hungry. Don't eat for like four days. I'm not lying. Um, on the new business, so we have really worked hard. So when school's out, we try to support what the schools and the teachers have done all year. And a lot of it is retention, right? And so we try to make, we try to keep things going during the summer with summer programs. And so a couple of years ago, we started, especially during that February vacation, when anything can happen. Not every kid has a chance to travel or be able to go to a museum, whatever it might be. So, um, our departments all get together and they put together a, a whole schedule of events for the whole week. It's also restaurant week. So try to make it so affordable so families can go out. So this is a sort of a preliminary. I mean, we're add, still adding to it, but if the, if you use social media or wherever you might be and you can spread the word, you know.
You have it posted now.
We will, yes. But we're adding to it like every day. There are new things coming out. Now, some are weather-related and skating and, you know, sliding and all that, but, but. Yes, anywhere you can share it.
Might be wise.
It's.
Facebook. You're absolutely correct, Chris.
They're all well-attended. We did it through the, 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 the holidays during, um, December. And some of them, we had to close out. There were so many people who wanted to participate. But there's, you know, wetland walks with our conservation agent and trails and, so we're trying to keep, you know, it's reduced the amount of time that students and kids spend on their computers or inside or in front of the TV and get them out. So. And there are other groups that might be adding to this. So if you have a group or an association or organization, church groups that might be doing something, let us know and we'll add to it. But, and then in the end, we'll have a whole calendar, multiple things each day that you'll be able to do.
Uh, more of a quick question. Um, since the last time we met, we've had some yucky weather and I know we were having glitches with emails. Are we seeing any sort of improvement? Because I know.
We sent some instructions out to parents how you could circumvent it. I would say probably seventy percent are able to, um, draw those out, but that's still not acceptable. So we are looking at another platform possibly to bring in. We, we use our school messenger all the time for every emergency. So we just want to make sure that it is in good order.
The, uh, the software bec- suddenly became popular, the bus transportation software, that cold day became like the most popular thing. I wish we could have sold advertisement.
I know.
We would, we would have cleaned up.
People are actually jealous of us.
Yeah, they're like, what? I don't know. I still saw a kid run down McKenna Street chasing the bus the other day. You know, it's gonna happen. You time.
Shorts.
If I, if I do this, if I do this at just the right time, I get my shoes on and we're walking. They had it all timed right to the second. Well, the bus must have come, everyone must have got on and the kids like hauling down towards St. Cecilia's. All right, anything else? All right, so we have another meeting in February or no?
No.
So I know, I saw the rabbi come in and I just want to make sure she had sent a very nice way ahead of time so that we make sure we sort of cognizances of the, you know, the holidays that might be coming up and different things that are going on. And if you don't mind sending that off to us once in a while and tell us what's going on in your world. It's a beautiful thing. And I'm telling you, if you don't make it on the ninth, the Black Heritage, that just the food. I can't emphasize, the students work really hard with their visors.
And or by email, just to remind us, today is Monday and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, but I don't want you to come around. You'll be eating food and that's less for me. Yes.
It'll stand out.
Great. That was gonna be my follow-up, is that it was getting trickled down to the schools and the PTOs and the calendar.
See, this is why we took a vote to bring you back on the. See, this is why we took a vote to bring you back on the committee after you said you, you weren't going to come to any more meetings. I know. And we denied it. We denied it. Take care of that. Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everybody for coming, those that are watching.